It's gonna start recording. Okay, so you guys ready? Yeah, cool. Pablo, you good? Um, alright, I'm gonna go ahead and um. I'm gonna go ahead and call this uh meeting to order. Welcome to the April twenty first two thousand twenty school board meeting. I'd like for us to uh I will do a roll call for the people on the phone so they know who's here. Uh Clark Warren.
Here.
Emily Berry.
Here.
Hillary DuBois.
Here.
Uh Pablo Muirhead.
Here.
And Parusha here. Um Dr. Davis, can you remind us of our, or could we um first adopt the agenda? I'll take a motion.
So, but could you check to see which students are here, student representative?
Oh, sorry, yes. Uh Jack, are you here?
Yeah, I'm here. I don't believe Sadie is here yet.
Okay, I don't see her on here either. Okay, thank you Pablo. Um alright, so uh I'd like to adopt the agenda. I'll take a motion. Pablo, you moved?
So moved.
Okay.
Clark, second.
Great. Um any comment or discussion? No? Okay, um all in favor? Clark?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
Pablo?
Aye.
Emily?
Aye.
Paru, aye. Great. Um Brian, can you remind us of our overarching result?
Uh yes, the overarching result for the school district of Shorewood is that our students are leaders who challenge themselves and grow uh and achieve academically, pursue their passions, navigate change, learn continuously, and contribute to the common good.
Great, so there's gonna be two opportunities for public comment tonight, one now and one at the end of our discussion. I am going to turn it over to you, Mickey, to let us know if there's any public comment now.
Alright, just a reminder, anybody wants to uh have a comment, just hit star six on their phone and they'll unmute you and I will call the last two digits of your phone number and you'll have the floor. As of right now, there are no, no takers. Oh, hold on. Uh person has last two digits, seven zero.
Uh thank you, Mickey. Uh this is Sachin Pandya. I am a fifth and sixth grade teacher at Lake Bluff and I am addressing the board today on behalf of the Shorewood Education Association. Uh I'm addressing you again this week. Uh well, thank you guys, one, for being here um to uh to take the time to dig into this. I I really do appreciate that. Um so I'm addressing you again this week uh to voice the concerns of the teaching staff about the lack of funding for teacher career advancement based on knowledge and experience, what we come and refer to as steps and lanes in the preliminary budget before you tonight. Uh you've received communication from over a dozen teachers this week with more to come about the impact that that lack of funding will have on them in the future and the value that our salary model has had for teachers in the past. From great teachers taking pay cuts to come here knowing their salary would grow to pursuing further education and knowing it would be rewarded, to buying homes in the district and sending their children to our schools, the steps and lanes model has served our district well for decades. The Shorewood Education Association has been and continues to be a partner willing to engage in difficult decision-making in order to meet the needs of the district. We understand that the challenges presented by our current situation may force us to have to make tough choices. We'd expect that the district is also developing budgets that forecast more difficult scenarios and we'd hope to be at the table helping to develop those scenarios in ways that best support teaching and learning going forward. To date, we've not been invited to share ideas in this budget. We also understand that the budget being presented is a best-case scenario budget. It's not based on an assumption of diminished funding, but rather the full funding proposed in the last biennial budget. The question we're still waiting for an answer to and are deeply concerned by the lack of an answer for is if the administration can't find room for career advancement for teachers based on knowledge and experience in a budget that's based on the assumptions of a one hundred and seventy-nine dollar per student increase and unprecedented healthcare savings, improvements over last year to the tune of half a million dollars, then when does it ever fit? Under what circumstances would we ever see a return? We've asked our superintendent that question directly for the last two weeks and teachers are still waiting for an answer. We've seen this happen before uh with programs like the elementary world language, which was taken away over a decade ago and still can't find its way back into the budget today. In fact, tonight it's gonna be pitted against career advancement and neither's going to win. In that intervening decade, we've seen all sorts of new priorities rise to the fore and find their way into the budget. Priorities that once included become indispensable without any future evaluation of their benefits. Meanwhile, things that we know are good for our children and our schools wait outside. Budgets are statements of values and priorities. As you examine this budget, we ask you to reflect on the values it represents. Does it represent the values and priorities of our community, which has continually voiced the desire to have a well-compensated, experienced, and knowledgeable staff? Or does it voice the values of those outside Shorewood who would like to see teachers and teaching weakened and diminished? Does it commit to practices and structures that have supported our tradition of excellence for decades? Or does it seek to use an unprecedented situation to further undermine public education and teaching as a career? We appreciate the decision you take to look more closely at this budget and ask the questions you need to ask. If there are questions that we can help you answer, please ask us. We would be eager to work with you. In turn, Shorewood's teachers ask you, how will this budget with its elimination of a predictable, objective system of salary advancement based on knowledge and experience serve the long-term needs of the Shorewood School District? Thank you for taking the time to think this over tonight and we look forward to working with you on it going forward.
Thank you, Sachin, and thank you to the teachers who sent us those um letters. We're definitely going to be discussing your comments and concerns today as we uh look at the, this first preliminary budget. So thank you.
Thank you.
Um Mickey, are there additional uh public comments?
Yeah, I'm looking at anybody else have a comment, star six, and I'll unmute you and I'll call out your phone, last two digits of your number. And I am not seeing anyone else.
Okay, so there will be another um opportunity at the end of our conversation, so um if you do have a comment that you'd like to share, you can do that then. Um so our only uh agenda item for tonight is to look at the preliminary, preliminary two thousand twenty, twenty-one budget. Um I asked uh Marta to provide us some additional background in terms of how the budget was uh developed and to talk a little bit about some of her assumptions that she put, that go into this and places that she has found savings and places where we know we will have to put additional money um and her recommendations moving forward. So uh I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to her.
Okay, so I will share my screen with you. Um. So just wanna talk about the budgeting process. Uh usually in the wintertime, we develop the projections and priorities. Uh in springtime, we talk about the uh employee wages and benefits. Uh most of the times, the benefits, um the health insurance renewal uh comes in in the spring, around Maytime. Um last year was a little bit unusual. We switched insurance carriers as of uh January first, so we knew that for next year are uh there's gonna be zero percent increase, but usually that's done in the springtime just because of the renewal. In August, there's annual meeting and budget hearing and then in October uh the board approves the uh final budget and the tax levy. So that's kind of the timeline for the uh budget. So what we're discussing today is preliminary budget. This budget will be revised many times. There's a lot of unknown due to Ca- COVID nineteen, so just wanna again uh just stress out that this is very preliminary. The board does not have to vote on it, approve anything. We just want everyone to be kind of aware of what's going on at the state level as well as what kind of assumptions are being used. So going back to nineteen ninety-three, nineteen ninety-four, revenue limit uh was in effect and so what revenue limit is, is the maximum amount of money that district uh can get between state aid and property taxes. And the way it's calculated, it's you take the uh the student, resident students attending Shorewood, times amount per student and that's your basic uh revenue limit. So in order to increase that limit, uh the taxpayers have to approve referendum. There's really no way to exceed the limit, the limit without referendum. Uh about eighty-four percent of our revenues come from the revenue limits, so property taxes and state aid. And again, to increase that, there needs to be a successful referendum. Uh so the remaining sixteen percent that are outside the revenue limit are state and federal grants, our school fees, and payments between the school districts um for uh open enrollment. So um you know, when we talk about raising our revenues, our uh options are very limited. Uh state and, state and federal grants are um they're not guaranteed. We do get some of them, but again, uh if state doesn't have money, there's no guarantee we're gonna get those grants in future. Um school, uh school fees and curricula fees, that's a very small portion of the budget. Again, if we don't get that money or our county in our budget, it puts a burden on our budget, but that's not one of the areas that you can actually balance your budget because it's a very small percentage. And payments between the school districts, that's open enrollment kids attending Shorewood. So in nineteen twenty, the district received eleven thousand seven hundred ninety-two dollars per student uh one-time for, full-time equivalency. So as you see, other school districts have received more except for Whitefish Bay. So when the revenue limit uh was passed, the state of Wisconsin looked at the each school spending in nineteen ninety-two, nineteen ninety-three and divided by how many students there were, attended that district and came with amount per student. So as you see, all schools in Wisconsin have different amount per student. Shorewood was one of the less spending school districts, so even if you uh compare us to Brown Deer, Brown Deer has five hundred ten thousand dollars more in revenue limit authority just because there were higher spending school districts prior to the revenue limit. And obviously, Fox Point and the Clay uh much higher spending school district, therefore the amount per member is much higher. The final tax levy is being approved in October uh and then the tax levy is being paid to the district and uh five installments. So there is payment made to the school district in, in uh January, February, very small payment in April and then uh June and August. So uh it's being broken in uh five installments and then uh the tax levy uh divided by total equalized values is the middle rate. So our middle rate was fourteen dollars and six cents per thousand of fair market value. Uh again, this is a little bit higher than other um schools in the area, however, it has to do with uh the property values in the area and also being in Milwaukee County. So when we looked at our budget, we looked at our priorities and one of them was to reconcile um the budget deficiencies from prior years, uh increase support for equity and also provide competitive wages for employees as well as the um benefit plan. So the board has addressed the benefit plan by uh switching the health insurance carry in January and then um you know, we wanted to make sure that we stay competitive with other schools to retain our employees. So the budget assumptions that were used was hundred seventy-nine dollars per student, so that's over three hundred thirty thousand for Shorewood School District. Also, we knew from the state budget that special education was supposed to increase from twenty-six percent to thirty. Um another assumption I used that enrollment will remain the same and we received slight increase in open enroll, open enrollment reimbursement. So if we do not receive hundred seventy-nine dollars per student, that's over three hundred thirty thousand revenues lost uh to the school district. And we know that um other schools are encouraged um by um school alliance is to either use zero percent increase or negative fifty dollars, uh so decrease by fifty dollars per student. So this is one of the assumptions that we'll be bringing back to you um sometime in May. In the current budget that uh you have attached to the uh the agenda, we also included one point eight one percent salary increases for all employees. Uh we have um, it's across the board, so teachers, support staff, administrators, everybody is getting one point eight one. Uh we have zero percent increase for health agent on disability insurance. We had to adjust athletic budget to reflect the current expenditures. So athletic budget is actually not getting additional funding uh of ninety thousand for new programming. There are, their budget's being adjusted. So I looked at five-year history and each year, we overspent it um the budget to actual by about ninety thousand. Uh there's three areas that needed to be addressed. One of them was um coaches' pay. Uh that was adjusted about, by about thirty thousand. Uh transportation, there was not enough money uh in the transportation budget. Obviously, we need to make sure that students are able to go to uh tournaments and so we adjusted that budget. And the third one is tournament, tournament fees. We didn't have sufficient amount in there. So we're not increasing, they're not giving the athletic um department additional ninety thousand. We're just adjusting budget to reflect the expenses that happened last few years. Maintenance budget was increased by twenty-five thousand dollars toward, to allow for purchase of supplies and equipment replacement. Uh currently, there's nothing in the budget for uh for our um equipment replacement, our vehicles are um aged. The um, most of the vehicles that we have in the maintenance department are from two thousand, they're breaking. It's, it's costing us more than um you know, just to keep, to keep them running. At some point, we have to have money to replace it, not necessarily with new, but something that it's gonna last districts few years. In other s- uh adjustments that I made was adjust for legal fees. Uh over the years, the district uh spent money on legal fees. The budget that we had was insufficient. It was only twenty thousand, so adjusted by additional fifty thousand to reflect five-year history. Uh again, this is something that by looking at the history, it just needed to be adjusted. Um we also are committed to equity training, so we had to increase that by twenty thousand. I will talk about this a little bit more when we get to the superintendent's budget. Also, there was a increase in WRS. As you know, when the wages go up, WRS will also go up, but there is a slight increase in WRS wages for next year, so I made sure that included in the budget. A budget three percent increase for all utilities. Uh we had two point two five, uh two point two five FTE custodial reduction due to retirement and resignation. So I just wanna for a minute talk about kinda how I um how I budgeted this year. So there is, we use Skyward for our uh financial, as a financial software. There is a program right in Skyward called uh salary negotiations and what it does is it pulls everyone that's currently on payroll and then we're able to adjust them based on different assumption. So when we first built the budget, uh all our teachers receive steps and lanes plus one point eight one. Um obviously, this was revised. Everyone else is getting one point eight one uh CPI increase. So and I did, when uh in January, when I did the initial budget for salaries and benefits, it looks at current employees. So last year's budget had included two point two five FTEs, but the budget that was built is based on current. So I just wanted you to know that it's not the budget that was built for two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, it's not built, uh built on last year's salaries and benefit. It's built on the current employees right now and payroll and increase based on assumptions that I provided to you a couple slides ago. We also um anticipating point six FTE reduction uh in teaching due to resignation and enrollment. So the budget uh started earlier, uh January. We had, we uh met uh with all the directors and superintendent and had to go through our expenses to justify every single expense and see how it impacts student achievement. So there was nothing guaranteed. Just because somebody had uh certain budget last year doesn't mean that we were going to carry that money forward. Uh it really made us reflect on our expenditures and see what's the best allocation of the limited resource that we have. Building budgets are a little bit different, so building budgets are based on how many students attend each school and uh then the principals are given an, an amount of money. Some of them distribute based on the department or grade. Some of them distribute uh based on a need. So schools are, our first schools are handling their budget a little bit differently, um but that's um, that money goes up and down depending on how many students are attending your school. So when we first uh built our budget in January, we included steps online and there was about hundred sixty, sixty-four thousand dollars. We talked about providing health benefits for our aides, so uh the two things we talked about was providing HRA or providing districts' health insurance. As you see, providing district health insurance is really unaffordable. However, we wanted to designate some of the insurance savings to provide them, to provide our aides with something. I know a lot of schools in our area offer health benefits for aides and we wanted to be competitive. Uh we also talked about uh adding Spanish in elementary schools and then increasing starting pays for aides. Um we're losing a lot of aides to uh districts, surrounding districts, uh again, has to do that uh our pay is really low comparing to our neighbors. We also talked about adding uh librarian, which was an additional ninety thousand dollars. So since then, we had made multiple revisions to our budget. Uh when I first started building budget in January, the unemployment amount was twenty-five hundred. That amount was revised to fifty thousand. So I just wanna share with you how unemployment works for school districts in Wisconsin. Uh for private industry, uh the business pays percentage of the payroll towards the state of Wisconsin and then state of Wisconsin pays the unemployment claims. That's not the case for schools. Uh school districts pay hundred percent of unemployment, so we uh could be potentially responsible up to three hundred seventy dollars per week per employee. So that's why we needed to make sure we have enough money designated for unemployment, just because we just don't know how much we're going to be responsible for. We also updated vacant positions for insurance. Uh we have vacant positions that employees are leaving or taking cash in lieu and there's a lot of interest of uh people that even currently have cash in lieu getting out of districts' health insurance due to spouse's layoff. Um so we wanted to make sure that we have enough money for upcoming uh staff to be able to offer them uh insurance benefits. So when we uh got together in January and reviewed the budget, uh this is some of the areas that the business office had that I recommended to eliminate for next school year. Um one of them is the insurance consultant. We have health insurance rate lock for three and a half years. So I think the district is going to be okay for additional two years not to have insurance consultant. I would recommend that prior to the year number three, the districts, uh the district will hire an insurance consultant to help with uh going out for bid, comparing that um insurance language to making sure that everything is in line and just presenting different options to the school board. Um ACA reporting is done in the house. It's already set up in Skyward. This is something that we can continue doing it. Uh Focus Five is a budgeting software. There's a different modules that the district can buy. This is one of the modules. I believe for next year, we can then eliminate that and still be able to do a long-term forecasting without this module. Fixed assets will be done internally by the school district. Actuarial study has to be done every other year. And uh with the changes, proposed changes in the handbook, eventually uh the need for actuarial study will be eliminated. There's two small software that we're currently not using and Wisconsin Educated Risk Management is uh consultant for um property and liability insurance. Again, this is done with uh this could be uh eliminated because we have agents that we work with. We don't need another agent to an agent. So for a total reduction for the business office was uh over forty-nine thousand dollars. We're, we're, we were also able, able to consolidate positions uh between the business office and high school um so that savings of about forty-five thousand, over forty-five thousand. We're also able to recode expenditures from title one to uh, from this school district to title one. So basically, we're still gonna have the same expenditure uh next year, except now it's being coded to the grant instead of the school district actually paying for this. So there's no change, however, we're able to decrease title budget by ten thousand. Superintendent's office. So uh when we went through the process in January, when everyone had to look at their budget and expenditures, uh the superintendent was able to go through uh his budget and uh came up with few areas that could be either postponed or could be eliminated. Uh scope perception, that's a survey that's being done. It's proposed to be done every other year. The saving will be approximately five thousand dollars. Diversity consultants, we uh could be eliminated. We have Sam um who uh is able to do some of the work. Student group decreased by twenty thousand and then supplies by six hundred. So the total savings is thirty-one thousand eight hundred. We're designing that savings to equity training. So as you have seen in the prior slide, we have saved, uh we are adding twenty thousand dollars to the budget for equity training. The equity training costs about fifty thousand dollars, so we are designating um the superintendent's um reductions to be able to have equity training for two thousand twenty, twenty-one. So as you have seen from the Skyward report, we have a very small surplus next year, just a little over eleven thousand. We are going to be revising budget. Um next revision anticipated May and then June. We are recommending that you wait with salary increases. We know there is a lot um and certainly, we just wanna make sure that we know more before we commit to anything. Our biggest concern is uh the state funding, hundred seventy, hundred seventy-nine dollars per student. Uh if we would not get this money, then how much will we get and what kind of implication that would have on the district's budget? Another thing I'm recommending that district um gets a line of credit to ca- to help with the cash flow. So when we talked about the property taxes and when they come in over the summer in June and August, if we don't get the entire um property tax payment to the school district, district will have a hard time making payroll. Um so it is recommended that we get a line of credit. Uh there's a very small fee for a line of credit uh just to get the resolution from the attorney that the board has to approved. It doesn't cost any money until the district actually takes money out of the line of credit and then uh this is something that will be board approved. However, it's a process. It takes about three weeks to get a line of credit, so I think we should get it, get it started now just in case if we need it uh in future. Some of the uh things that I wanted to share with you related to COVID nineteen uh just uncertainly because of really high unemployment rates, we anticipate lower tax corrections, which means less money to the school district. Um also, we know that interest rates are much lower than they were in the prior year, so receiving the same interest income as we did in two thousand nineteen, twenty is not realistic at this point. Um due to high unemployment, we're also concerned about the school fee collections and then athletic fees. Other things that are, we're concerned about is possible reduction state aid, especially elimination or uh reduction of the per student amount, which will have a, a very significant impact on the school district. Um additional item that it's, we're also looking at is our rental income. Uh if our facilities are not being rented, it's very possible that our rental income will go down. At the federal level, we're concerned that uh if there is federal cuts, uh that our, some of our federal grants will be reduced and as title, um we have multiple title one and title four, title two, title four and also Medicare reimbursement will be Title two, title four, and also Medicare reimbursement will be re- reduced in future. Um because a lot of our um families might. Lose their are losing their jobs, uh they might not be able to pay for uh school lunches. It is very possible that we're gonna have to make transfer from fund ten general fund to fund fifty. To recoup some of the losses, as you know, uh for last few years, this was the case, we just didn't have enough revenues. To for in fund fifty foot service fund to support itself, so. Um the transfer, anticipated transfer will be much higher this year as well as the next next year, just because people will not be able to. Uh maybe pay for school lunches, not uh. Being eligible for free reduce, but then not being able to pay, so that's something to take into consideration. The expenditures that we know that will go up, uh unemployment claims were, there were forty eight claims as of. April ninth, we're over fifty right now. Um because of our referendum of sixty five million dollars, we know that our. Property insurance is going to go up, uh and that has to do obviously with our. Uh buildings being uh the value, the the higher rate due to that uh the referendum. And also field trips and other commitments, we know that we have put money down on field trips and have committed to. Other things and at this point, we're um not eligible for refund and even. Uh being asked to pay, so this is something that we need to kinda work through and see. How much money is district going to be responsible for paying for the commitment um that. Would have happened if it wasn't for COVID nineteen, but because things were canceled, there's still expectations from the school district to be. To to pay for it. So as you know, the fund balance is at nine point seven two, so when I uh when we look at fund balance, it's always measured as of June thirtieth. Um so the board policy calls for fund balance being being between twelve to fifteen percent. I think it's important to have some sort of plan to build this fund balance up a little bit. This is why I think it's really important to wait with uh salary increases, just because. The fund balance is not large enough to be able to absorb um. Deficit in the budget as well as to get line of credit, just because we don't have enough money. To be making the, if something happens, to pay, to make the payroll, just because the fund balance is at less than ten percent. So just to kinda summarize it, we are going to monitor our school funding and keep revising the budget. Unemployment claims, at this point, all of them are pending, over fifty claims are pending and against school district. We will know more um in upcoming weeks, there is no, nobody's picking up the phone, there's nothing we can do to. Call and find out on status, so again, the time will tell. Uh we are going to add the two point two five F T custodial position due to the COVID nineteen. I think we're gonna have to change the way we clean our buildings. Also, it is recommended to um get a line of credit uh just to. Make sure there's enough money to continue with operations, especially making payrolls, regardless of what's going to happen. Uh with either state money or local uh tax payment coming in the summer. And our next budget report will be done at end of May, early June, obviously, if there's something else that'll come out, I will make sure the board is up to date. Are there any questions?
So I think I saw Clark already raise his hand, um so yes, I'll let him go first.
Well, I I could start by going, if we could go back. To um when we were talking about the 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 assumptions that we that you made in the budget. See if I can find the page here real quick, sorry. Okay, so we're talking about the um. The budget assumptions, yeah, thank you. On page, uh actually. Eleven, I'm looking at different, um the hundred seventy nine per pupil increase. Uh the special education reimbursement, um enrollment will wa- wait uh be the same. What, what do you think the likelihood is of um any of those not being true? Um and the reason I ask that is because I've been participating in some other conversations, I know other board members have too. That there is some actual real fear that particularly item number two, it sounds like, that they. Um legislature might um. Well, we might not get what we were promised, so I I just didn't know if there was anything that you guys have heard that's different than that or. Um what your. What your guts telling you, I suppose, cuz that's some some respects, that's what we have right now.
So I think hundred seventy nine dollars per student is knowing what's happening around the state is not very likely.
Okay.
So I think, you know, the worst case scenario is ni- negative fifty where it's going to be, I. Wish I had the crystal ball, but I think one seventy nine is.
Is not gonna happen.
Very likely it's not going to happen.
What about the special ed?
I think those kinda go hand in hand, uh so. You know, when the budget was proposed a year ago, I think the state of Wisconsin was in a really good shape until this. You know, this COVID nineteen, this the state had pretty nice surplus, my understanding is that money is gone, there is no surplus and now. You know, there, we don't know how long we're gonna continue with the way things are and, you know, after the um. Safer at home uh order is lifted, what's gonna happen to the businesses? You know, are they going to be receiving the the sales taxes, the property taxes, the um. You know, just what kind of revenues is they going to be getting of, how fast are they going to be getting that money, so there is a real concern. Especially, you know, looking in October, which is not really that far away.
Right.
How much money you're gonna be able to recoup to be able to support districts at this level?
Um what about uh I know, it seems like we're getting, it's been pretty slow on the CARES Act too from the feds. Uh I I know there's been some funding that's been promised to the states through that, but it does sound like they're not, we we just really don't have any idea. Where that is, is that, have have you guys heard anything different, Brian or or Martha, on where that is coming?
Yeah. So my understanding on on the CARES Act from the the federal legislation, which would provide relief. Uh uh we're still waiting on uh some clarification of the rules. Um that there's a designated amount for Wisconsin, but the federal rules are still being clarified. Um so at this point, it's, we're still somewhat of a wait and see.
Is that a possibility though that, I mean, we'll get, we should get something, I would think, we just don't know if it's much, right?
Correct, yes. Yes, so yeah, the state, yeah, the state has a uh designated amount and I don't remember exactly what that. Uh where that number falls, but yeah, the state has its has a designated amount. It's it's thinking through, like, what is the, what are the rules as far as the distribution uh is concerned? Um that's all tied into that, um so, so yeah, so we're basically kind of a wait and see on that.
Well, any idea what the timing is on that, because it's decisions like that that are gonna impact what decisions. Like not just Sherwood.
Right, yeah, so I I think they're hopeful within the next month, um I think that's what we'd be looking at unless Marta's heard anything different.
No, I think the same, and you know, a lot of schools in C S A one area, I had a call with business managers on Friday. Everyone is, you know, either zero percent increase or as, you know, going as as. Negative fifty, so somewhere there, but the one seventy nine is. It should be one of the scenarios, but I don't think it's very likely.
Okay. Um regarding the other bu- budget assumptions then on the next page, um. The, I understand what what the assumption is related to the one point eight one salary increase, I just wanna clarify something. Um you said that um steps in lanes, originally steps in lanes. Plus the one eight point eight percent was um expected prior to the situation we find ourselves in. Um those steps in lane, what what would it have been if um it wasn't? The one point eight one percent, but the steps in lanes was considered and then. A smaller amount or no uh salary increase across the board. You see what I'm asking?
Yeah, so we didn't run the scenario, my understanding was in past in Sherwood, um teachers have received steps in lane. And C P I, which though is the one point eight one, I can definitely look at that. Um the only concern is, you know, the even in the best case scenario, the district is getting hundred seventy nine dollars per student. Which is like one point five percent of the revenue limit increase and then steps in lane for teachers is three point two five, so you have. Almost twice as much, in order to continue doing that, if that's the the priority, how are you going to fund it? You have to kinda look at um. The entire budget and see, you know, how we can make this work, but I, so I haven't run difference in years, less than than C P I, I can definitely do that.
Is there also a way to to look at, rather than this, I know the C P I is, and I'm just trying to come up with some ideas here, but. If if we were to address the salary increases, if they're across the board at one point eight one percent, are there different? Sal um employee groups that could be. Um could get increases that are different, I know this is not gonna be a popular statement, but. If I were to provide increases to certain groups that are lower than the one point eight percent, would there be a way to make that up for the steps in lane? And you would have to make other cuts, I think as well, but.
So, yeah, one thing, one thing I wanna add is looking at last year to this year. Um you know, because of the insurance savings, the way it works actually is that. Our employees received high insurance savings that the district received. So, you know, if you uh think about any employee. Uh that's over hundred dollars a month, over twelve hundred dollars a year in savings because they're not paying for the health insurance. That should be part of the conversation because if you look at the take home, what they did, what they took last year, last September versus this year. Even though there is no pay increase or the pay increase is not as much, I I feel that has to be part of discussion. And then looking at salary increases, we know our aides are underpaid when compared to C S A one schools. But other groups, I think are not, you know, they're they're compatible, so for example, like custodians, definitely not underpaid. Managers were right in line, but the aides is where the concern is, and we can't keep anyone, you know, our turnover is really high.
Well, what, speaking of turn, actually, speaking of the number of employees, are we confident that we have the right number of employees with each one of those groups? So for example, um I know, I understand where the custodial staff is right now, so that was pretty clear, but. Uh regarding the aides and other groups, are we? Um do we have the right number or are we increased in some areas because of the high turnover, we're never sure what's going to happen?
You know, it's a really tricky question because uh it's our special education needs are based on I E Ps. And depends how the I E Ps are written, you kinda have to meet the minutes. Um you know, this is one of the areas that we can look at, um again, and when you talk about decreasing funding. In special education, you have to understand that uh there is uh maintenance of effort.
Yeah, we can't.
You can't make cuts, you have to maintain it or pay more, so it's, I mean, you could increase the. You know, if some people left, not replace those positions and then read or adjust, you know, everyone's pay based on their savings, but you can't just. Eliminate positions.
Okay.
And not do anything with that money.
Yeah, no, I understand. I appreciate the um the the explanation of the athletic budget um adjustment. But the question, the follow up question I have to that is, so make sure, actually, let's make sure I understand it. You took the last three years and you looked at it and you said, okay, they're on average, the athletic department's overspending by ninety grand per year. Which means we didn't allocate the budget uh pro- um accordingly. Um so if they were underspending, what was getting hurt that in those years that? Um we potentially missed and. And rather than reallocating that that budget, are there any things that the athletic budget did, the athletic department did to reduce their their. Their expenditure, I, for example, the business office did some cuts, superintendent's office did some cuts. Did other departments make cuts that maybe you don't have highlighted here?
So our goal was to make sure that we preserve anything that's affecting students. We didn't wanna cut, so business office is a little bit removed from student achievement. It's needed, but so I uh we did not ask athletic department to make cuts, we wanna make sure that our kids have all the. Sports, you know, they're being able to provide the transportation and all kinds of activities. So there was something that we wanted to maintain, we're not adding anything, we're just maintaining what we had in the past. And the reason why I wanted to adjust it is because I truly believe that. In order ho- to hold somebody accountable, you have to give a reasonable budget. You can't hold somebody accountable if the budget doesn't reflect the reality, and that's what was happening in athletic budgets.
Okay, and that's why I didn't wanna, I didn't want to state that I felt that somebody was not being held accountable, because I don't know. But what I was concerned about was if for three years that we were overspending in that department. It doesn't look, it it was one of two things, we're not holding them accountable or uh actually, three things, we're not holding them accountable. We didn't provide them with the the proper guidelines in the first place, which is kinda what you're saying here, to adjust the budget to be more accurate. The other part is, um do we ever, um how do we, how does the staff make sure that? Either those departments are spending appropriately to get those student outcomes, so. Do, does that make sense? I mean, we need to hold them accountable to their budget, but how often do we review? Not just athletics, but how often do we review all of our programs to make sure that? Not only are we staying within budget, but the budget that we're spending is being done efficiently. Does that make sense, Brian?
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, when we would look at, I mean, that would be around, say, program review. Um you know, for example, so if we're spending money on uh like expeditionary learning, for example, and being able to do assessments around. Uh expeditionary learning and and what products, you know, that we're getting um from that, um you know, that would be. Kind of the crossover between uh Marta's office and then curriculum and instruction, I would say, um I mean, that would just be one. Be one example, but that's that's something that, yeah, we certainly wanna be conscious of, I think the the athletic. Example is is more of just kind of basic funds that just have historically and talking with. With uh LeVar, um you know, something that had been historically underfunded prior to his time here. Uh and so that's just something that we feel we need to be able to correct now, um as as part of uh, as Marta said, it's just part of. You know, better accounting for for that department, um and making sure that we're staying, you know, proposing things that are the reality of what it is.
Okay. Um can I keep going? I know other people are gonna have questions, but is it okay if I just keep going here and then?
Let me just see if anybody wants to chime in, Pablo, do you wanna ask a question and then, no, you want Clark to keep going, okay? We're all gonna let you ask all the questions, Clark, and then we'll come back to it.
Well, that's not fair, but uh, okay, I'll keep going. Um the increased budget for equity training, uh you clarified that, I did have a question on on how those numbers were matching up. But I see what you're doing um with that, uh regarding the increase in utilities for the three percent, is that a standard? Um increase that you see, and if so, um is there anything that we can think about? When it comes to, well, the new solar panels that we're putting on, is there any impact from that that we would, that would we'd eventually see? I know that wouldn't be right away, um two, um. Our utility, is that based on last year's budgeted amount or your expected spend for this year? Because my guess is utilities for this this fiscal year are gonna be lower. Because we're not, the buildings are shut down, so. I just wanted to see if you could explain that, as if there any, how much does that three percent re- represent also? And is there any room to lower that expectation?
So three percent is usually the average that I use, some years a little bit higher, some years is a little bit lower, it kinda depends on the winter. If you have a long winter, cold long winter, that's gonna affect your your utilities, your heating costs. Um but it's pretty safe. And three percent, three percent was used based on the budgeted numbers, not this year's numbers, because I don't know what this year's numbers are, the bills are still coming in. Um you are right, the utility cost most likely would be less this year because of school being closed, however, this is not. Something that is going to happen in the future, so um. You know, I just wanna keep what we had last year and increase a little bit to make sure that we have sufficient funding for the following year.
Okay. Okay, um. I I think that might be an area we might wanna. I I think that might be an area we might wanna, well, when more things come in, that might be an area you wanna relook at. Only because, like you said, that some of it is, um, a lot of it, you can't control from the idea of. You know, what's the weather gonna be like, but if unless prices are going up astronomically on the utilities themselves, or not astronomically steadily. Um, then it's gonna be. I don't know if it'll always be three percent, but I understand it's a conservative estimate right now. Um. Can we skip to page fifteen? It's the budget considerations in January. Um, these are all, sorry, it's my dog, my, no, it's my wife's demon, not my dog. Um, and that is on record now. Um, the, um, are all these considerations that are not in the budget right now? That's what I wanted to clarify, the ones that budget considerations in January.
Which side are you on?
Sorry, fifteen, steps in lanes, provide health benefits, adding Spanish. And if they're not all, if, oh, I'd like to, um.
So the, they're not.
None of them are in, right?
None of them, so we were building the budget, you know, like just being able to know how much money is attached to everyone and looking at the bottom number. And even having a budget, you know, prior to COVID nineteen, our budget was negative. But because there's so many things that are just unknown, especially when it comes to revenue side and some of the expenses and putting that in.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we need to hold off and just maybe another month. Definitely keep talking about it, but not making any decisions until we know just a little bit more.
That's fine, absolutely. I just wanted to know if any, I was trying to clarify based on a public, the, we heard um Sachin say. Um, some uh very key comments, and I wanted to make sure I understood as well that. Currently, these numbers are not reflected in the budget that you've proposed.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Um, so what was the savings from the health insurance? It's two hundred thousand?
It's under two hundred thousand, it's almost.
Like one ninety?
Yes, and then for employees was over two hundred.
Okay, but the district savings is for our budget, right, is so that, let's just round it to two hundred and then the business office saved a hundred and five. Right? Is that right? If you include the FTE and like if I do the, if I add all those things together around a hundred and five?
So the way I just highlighted some of the biggest differences. I adjusted, there's also adjustment for grants, so for example, when we are getting grants, either the amount is going up or going down. Even though last year's budget doesn't reflect that, I had to adjust it for what we know as of right now, so that's gonna vary a little bit. Um, but just wanted to highlight things that are, the district has control over. Obviously, grants, that's not something that we can control, but um, so the things that you see, the assumptions is. Everything that was adjusted by uh by me that I felt needed to be adjusted. Because of prior, the year's expenditures or what we know because of unemployment.
Right, so the adjustments are in the budget, but then the things that we know, which are, I, if I do the math right. Are about four hundred and thirty four thousand dollars additional-ish, I didn't even do the health benefits, actually. Um, would be over that. Um, so I guess one of, I I wanted to ask about, and maybe this is for Brian as well, like in terms of how these considerations. Um, you know, I feel like as a board, we've talked about um salary equity for aides. Um, and paraprofessionals, uh, you know, for a couple of years and just recently. Um, the position of a librarian, um, adding Spanish. And so I was, I wondering if you could talk a little bit, have you guys talked about priorities essentially? Right, like, let's say that we end up having flexibility in the upcoming budget, you know, somehow. Um, to add things back in. Like, what are some of the priorities that you guys addressed um in those earlier meetings, you know, January and February?
So what I can say, the priority for us was always to look at the aides and being able to do something with the starting pay as well. As providing some sort of uh health benefits, either um. Partial payment for towards health insurance, right now aides can buy health insurance at a hundred percent of the cost, which is unaffordable. Or, you know, so splitting that cost with them or providing some sort of HRA that they could be using at, for, you know. For medical expenses, um, in the beginning of January, I had discussion with two local clinics. If they were able to take uh health aides and not health aides, aides and their employee, their um. Spouses independent or the district employees that are not currently on our health insurance. And what kind of cost would that be to the school district because of what happened with COVID nineteen, obviously discussions stop. But that's possibility down the road, so those employees have access to some sort of medical care. Maybe not the full extent of having um health insurance, but still being able to get some sort of medical benefits.
So that was your top priority?
That was definitely a top priority, just because it's very difficult for us to retain uh paraprofessionals. We are constantly in a hiring mode and people leave because. You know, they go to Nicole and their starting pay is over two dollars more an hour and they are, you know. Those position come with full health benefits, like it's just, we can't compete.
Okay, and so that was, um, so that would be if there were some flexibility or we actually have. Do you think that that would have been the priority that was identified by the the administrative team?
I believe so. Brian, do you wanna add anything to this?
Yeah, no, I think that's, I think that's right, and and to what level, um, you know, really just depends on what would become available. So I think, um, I think that certainly, again, when we're looking at comparables, um, you know, I think that's, that's where that rises up. Um, you know, between that and certainly as we've talked about steps in lanes, um, you know, trying to put more money there too, um, would be. You know, another priority, but when we're looking at competitive salaries, I think that's, that's where um the aide pay was something that rose to the top.
Okay, and then just to understand, like, just to confirm, I think, uh, Clark, you said this, but the current budget that you put together has the one point eight one. Percent for all groups. Um, but it has steps and lanes frozen for next year based on like current. So I I guess I wanna understand, like, we haven't, where are you uh both in kind of conversations about? How to continue to um find ways to um give employees kind of like. You know, like steps or like understandings of like where they move, right, what steps and lanes does in terms of transparency. Um, and having the conversation about like if it's not gonna be what we're currently doing for whatever reason, like what is it gonna be?
Yeah, so we haven't had any conversations recently, like this year about that. Um, so that would be something, again, um, there hasn't been conversations about dismantling steps and lanes. I would hope that we could get to, you know, another year where we'd be able to be in in better economic shape to support that. Um, but I think if we do want to look at something, you know, an alternative model per se. Um, that we could assure more sustainability, because I think that has been in prior years, part of our concern about sustainability of steps and lanes. Then that's something we'd wanna sit down with the S E A and sit down probably with a board representative and just talk about, you know, what are our options? Um, what are other districts doing, what are our values and putting something together for us that would make sense uh long term? But that hasn't been anything that we've talked about, um, you know, again, this year.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I just ask a clarifying question to that? Because I guess that's, those are two different things in my mind. The first thing is, one, not being able to provide the intended increase. Because of our current economic climate and the difficulties in funding that we're having, right? So that's looking at the budget for next year, an increase is gonna be increasingly difficult to do because of the economic climate. And and all these other budget implications as we're talking about. That's, that's a fact, right? But that does not mean wiping away steps and lanes for perpetuity. I think that needs to be very clear, because I think steps and lanes keeps us competitive with other districts. Uh, you know, and I think as we look at the challenges that we have in recruiting staff and keeping people in education, just nationally and in our state. That's a totally different conversation to have than saying we have, you know, a very uh red. Budget right now because of these things and we're, we need to be, you know, financially responsible. Um, the second part of that, though, to look at long term sustainability and making sure that this model in which. Is very attractive for paying, you know, for pay for our teachers. Um, that that sustainability and what other alternatives, I feel like, yes, there could be conversations about that. But that is not what we're talking about this evening, that is a future conversation. And I think speaks to a broader idea as to how do we pay our teachers. You know, that their worth and and, you know, broader about how we attract teachers and keep teachers and all those things. I just wanna make sure we're being clear that the conversation we're having about our budget this evening. And the next conversation we'll have in May or June, that that's not, we're not talking about getting rid of steps and lanes. We're talking about how to make sure we are funding it appropriately this year or this this next budget year. Um, so I just wanna be, it just makes sure that that's crystal clear. And so for me, having to say that out loud, I just thank you for that opportunity.
Can I, I, can I follow up on that? I think, um, that was very important designation, right? Because, um, that steps and lanes is ob- obviously. Um, a key topic of discussion that we need, that we're having right now. And so that's why, and the reasons why I was trying to go through my questions, um. Um, and and address areas that potentially could be looked at again. Because I think one of the things that we need to look at while they're, while, um. Marta continues to to go through this and Brian continues to go through it as well, is that. Not only do we have the climate that um we're in regarding a pandemic that nobody expected to happen. We also have, I think, Brian, I heard you say that this was something that um you were concerned about prior to the pandemic. Um, about how were we gonna be able to continue to fund things like steps and lanes? But the situation we're in is that not only do we have that, but we do have an overall. Um. Um, situation where we do need to compete with other districts on not only. Our our um teaching staff, but also our um district staff as well. And so I was trying to, what what I would like to have the discussion, not only tonight, but continue to think about is. How do we make sure that we keep that in mind, because that's something that um we we gonna have to continue to pay attention to, particularly over the next six months. Um, field trips and other commitments, um, did, real quick, sorry, I'm gonna jump right back into it if that's okay.
Sure.
Um, field trips and other commitments, are, is this for the, in in mostly for the international trips that we had to cancel?
It's for any trips. Even the kids going locally, you know, we're finding out that we're still on the hook for the amounts or at least for partial of the money. Trying to work some sort of agreement that those filters will be postponed, so we're not gonna lose the money, but. There's.
Okay. What, what's the, are are they, are they not getting? I guess, what's their level of um cooperation with some of that? Are they, is it just a, we're not giving you anything back right now? Or what seems to be, I I know it puts them in a hard spot because, you know, this was revenue for them too, but there's also. There were other avenues that they, they had to try to get some of that back too, as I understand it.
So I think at this point, the best case scenario is let's not lose the money, but we're scheduled to filter for next school year. That's our goal, to make sure. We're, yeah, we're not stuck, you know, paying the bill and not getting anything in the, in return.
Um, and then, um, I know this was something that others wanted to ask too, I know, Emily, I know you wanted to ask this more. Uh, about the un- unemployment compensation, you know, others had. So i- if you could explain that a little bit further, I know it's different than um outside of. Um, in other areas of of business. Um, but what, who, what types of jobs are being claimed for unemployment right now, considering that? You know, we're, we're still paying them right now as well too, and I I just wanna understand how that works.
So there is, I would say, two different groups of employees. One is coaches that have jobs outside the school district, as soon as they file unemployment. The district is on a hook for percentage of the unemployment fee, so that's given. There is few people that has, they've resigned from the scholarship that filed for unemployment, obviously, we're contesting those. We had somebody that is collecting pension that is trying to do unemployment, so there is a lot of, um. The, it's, it's just a lot to go to work through and make sure that people that are eligible for unemployment. You know, get the unemployment, we don't wanna delay anything, but then when we feel that people should not be eligible on employment. Make sure that we're contesting that and um that giving all the information required to the Department of Labor.
Okay, I guess that was just one thing I wasn't expecting. Um, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't have thought of, you know, coaches outside the district. That are claiming it for that portion that we pay them for, right?
Even though we pay for, we pay their coaches for spring sports.
Yeah.
You know, just because they, uh. Just because they um are getting unemployment from their primary employer. That automatically triggers unemployment against the school district.
So wait, okay, so is there any way we? I don't, should we not be paying them then? If they're, if they're eligible for unemployment, why would we be paying them?
Um, well.
Or like if, not eligible, let me restate that, that was said incorrectly. If they're collecting unemployment. And we're paying them, that doesn't seem to be what we should be doing, right?
Pay them for just a very small portion of for a sport. And not ongoing, so.
Right.
You know, I think that the way unemployment looks at it is, okay, so week number one, number two, you paid, what about week three, four, five? You know.
Oh, as long as we keep paying them, okay.
This is a claim at this point, right? Like, they actually, this is all, you were just saying, right, like, nothing has actually, you're still in the process of all the paperwork, so.
They're all pending.
They're all pending, yeah, right.
Okay, perfect.
Cause you're right, Clark, we shouldn't be, we, we shouldn't be getting, giving unemployment to people who are paying as well.
Right.
So are there other examples of those, cause I, is it really like, we have like forty coaches or what other people are? Filing those claims?
So, uh, coaches is probably one of the biggest, our rec department employees that kind of come and go and work here. Little bit here and there, some of those people did not get paid just because they don't, they were not scheduled to work during that time. But because in the last twelve months, they did receive paycheck from the school district that automatically triggers unemployment. So you kinda have to look at like past year and who was getting paycheck and who is not being paid in now. Um, and, you know, some of the positions, obviously, they were not scheduled, that's why we're not paying.
Okay.
So can I ask about, so for, if someone is laid off, you know, as a coach, has a a day job, so to speak. A a full time other job and gets laid off of that job, what percentage of unemployment are we? Are, is the school district on the hook for if, you know, even if we continue? And and in theory, would pay that person?
So it kind of depends on the wages and the earnings, how much money they were getting from the other employer versus Sherwood. And it's there, it's a percent, percentage that it's allocated between all the employers.
So if I made a hundred thousand in my day job and I'm making, you know, I don't know what. What would be comparable coaches pay, we're on the hook for a percentage of that hundred thousand?
So, yeah, unemployment's only three hundred seventy dollars uh a week. So you can't actually claim your full pay, you can only, that's the maximum amount money you can get from the state of Wisconsin. Now, there's a supplemental unemployment right now from feds, six hundred dollars, which. None of us know the the long term effect are the districts that you're going to be responsible for a portion of that. We, at this point, I don't think so, but I I'm not hundred percent sure that that would be the case. I know for the state unemployment, we are hundred percent responsible for it. Uh, so you can't, when you are uh an employee that, let's say, makes hundred thousand. Obviously, unemployment, it's not gonna pay you a hundred thousand, the maximum amount you can get is three hundred seventy dollars and that's allocated percentage. Based on your wages between all the employers that you had in last twelve months.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you.
Let me see here if I can show them to, oh, I had a question about the fund balance. Um, policy is twelve to fifteen percent. Were we not considering dropping that to ten percent at one time? And we still wouldn't make it, but, um, is that something, you, I heard you say you recommend it to keep it at twelve to fifteen percent though?
I think that's, yeah, I think we had talked about that at the, maybe in October. Um, with Marta, and so I think, um, yeah, I mean, it's still, I mean, I think we still need to think about, like, how, well, I mean, if we drop it to ten, that's not, I guess, the issue. It's more like, are we gonna be able to get to ten now? Um, right? And so I think, but yeah, we did, we did have that conversation in October.
Yeah, and I think that we, let's figure that out because if we stick with twelve to fifteen and we want to maintain that policy, that's gonna put more pressure on the budget going forward. And, and if we have priorities that are more important to us than the fund balance, then we need to make sure that we follow through with that.
I just want to make sure that, you know, understand that building fund bonds is not something that should be done in a one year. That's a long. It should be five-year process, just a little bit. If this is where you, what the board would like, maybe just a little bit each year over how many years, but not.
Right. Well, and my concern is that if we start to build that back up in a year where like we're in right now, we might, my point is maybe we reassess that, reset it, and then over the next couple of years, if we think twelve to fifteen percent makes more sense as we continue to get back, um, to some sort of normal fee. Assuming a worst-case scenario than right now. Um, then it would, might be easier just so that we don't have that additional, um, pressure and we can prioritize a little bit better in the short term, understanding that we might have to change it again for the long term. I guess, I guess the, the last, I had a bunch of other questions, but I'm gonna save some and, and I'll see if I have any left after other people get a chance to, but the, the overall, um, comment I wanted to make was that, um, as we, you continue to look at this, one of the things that I would, um, think would be helpful, um, not only just for, for the board, but for those, uh, I guess thirty-plus people that are also listening on the phone. Um, what could be helpful is when you did your scenarios, if you could give us summaries of what those might be, um, and, and you, you guys attached the advice from the SAA already. And, um, I think Pablo, you've attended some calls, Prue, I know you have, um, and I have separately as well. And that's one of the things that Swassa was, you know, hammering on this morning too, was that, you know, make sure that we're continuing to evaluate those three scenarios that they recommend we, uh, continue to, um, monitor. And us seeing that and others seeing that, um, might help with some of the decision-making and communications, um, as we go. Cause it, we're, I, obviously we're nowhere near being able to, um, agree on a budget at this point. I'll let somebody else answer now, Prue. Thank you, guys. I appreciate your patience.
Sure. Emily, I saw you, uh, unmuted yourself.
Oh, conveniently, I was just being ready for whoever you want to go, but I, I'll go, um. Uh, so for, my first question is just sort of to level set and it's more of a process question, so. Um, so for Marta and Brian, as you work your way through and, you know, you get hopefully more clarity, are you continuing to work with a sort of best case, worst case and middle path type scenario for the, for, um, our budget?
Yeah, that, that's what, that's what we'll do. I mean, the, again, part of this, the reason why we're at where we are right now is, is beginning in January up to this, up to prior to the COVID nineteen piece, like this is really what we were focusing on. So trying to manage the pandemic and set the budget at the same time. So I, I think as we, as we go from tonight, taking your feedback, taking the feedback that we've gotten, um, throughout the day, to be able to look at how we move forward, um, I think, yeah, taking those three scenarios is gonna be an important, just an important process to be able to, to do that.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I think that would help me, um, to understand the choices that we're making. And then again, I think, you know, Parvee's question about, um, setting a short list of priorities for if and when funding becomes available. And then also, you know, unfortunately, a list of sort of next things to consider cutting if we find ourselves in the, in the worst-case scenario.
Yeah.
Um, would be helpful for me in terms of process.
Yeah, but I think we can, um, why don't we plan on doing that in May for you, bringing, bringing that, that back in May? I think that's a reasonable expectation.
Great, okay. Um, and then the other, okay, so, so hopefully a good segue to that. Um, so Marta said really clearly that prior to COVID nineteen, our budget was negative. And so I wanted to kind of dig into that idea and why that would be the case, cause I guess, um, you know, knowing that we are able to exceed our revenue limit and, um, knowing that we were expecting um, a one seventy-nine per pupil increase, I guess, um, I know you went through a bunch of the assumptions, but I'm, maybe I'm just being dense. Like I, I still don't understand why, um, we were so, you know, the budget seemed so tight even prior to this hitting. And, and I guess then, you know, was reflected in our best-case scenario, like why that was the case.
So the reason why it was negative, just because we made so many adjustments to the budget that were substantial. You know, you look at ninety thousand athletic fees, that, that was not part of the budget. The twenty-five thousand for maintenance, fifty thousand for legal fees. That's, I mean, right there, you have over what you need for the steps and lanes. But again, you know, if we are going to continue athletics as before, it's not fair to give them insufficient budget and they just expect that at the end of the year, things will work out. So, uh, that's probably one of the biggest reasons why the numbers kind of didn't match up is because the adjustments. The same thing, you know, comes to legal fees, you know, if you, over the last five years, your legal fees exceed certain amount of money, at some point you have to do something about it. You have to adjust the budget. You just can't ignore it. So, um, you know, if we didn't make those adjustments, definitely there would have been enough money for steps and lanes and, uh, because of the insurance savings and one seventy-nine per student.
Okay. Um, okay, well, that, that helps. Um, and then I guess I'm, I'm, in terms of slides, I'm looking around slide fourteen, um. I guess I'm wondering, like, you, you made reference to, you know, wanting to preserve things that affect students, and I appreciate that. Um, I, I guess I'm thinking that there are some gray areas or departments where I would say some of what they do, you know, directly impacts students, like building maintenance, right? Like the, we want, you know, we've had a lot of conversations about this, about, um, you know, both in terms of custodial services, but also maintaining the facilities. That does affect students, but it's not directly learning, right? So, um, and then, you know, there's, uh, of course, the people cost involved in that. So, um, for both, uh, for departments like that, and then I guess for, um, the building budgets, um, there was nothing really reflected in this presentation in terms of a substantial shift or any um, significant savings. So I'm wondering if that, just those things didn't emerge at all, or you, they're just not in this presentation because they sort of were a net zero.
So we talked about the building budgets. However, those budgets are usually divided by departments and given to teachers and they do affect teacher. You know, and the student, so we didn't want to take that away. The money goes right in the classroom and, you know, we wanted to make sure that we continue supporting those teachers. Um, and when it comes to maintenance, so our maintenance budget is about four hundred fifty thousand. And it might seem like a lot of money, but in reality, that money is spent, you know, fairly quickly just because our buildings are aging. Now, this is something you might want to relook at after the referendum is done to see if you really, if you need to have four hundred fifty thousand, or could you decrease that budget? But currently, things are breaking left and right, and even four hundred fifty thousand, I feel it's not even sufficient to address everything that's needed.
Emily, I would, I would also add to that, part of the conversations that I've been having with my superintendent cohorts are, you know, what is, what does life look like after COVID nineteen if we were to re, when we reengage school back in September? There's a strong consensus that cleaning procedures and sanitizing buildings and that is gonna be significantly different, at least out of the gate. Um, so we want to make sure that we're, we're at full strength and we're staffed and ready to go at that point. Um, and that, again, we would, that, that certainly could be an annual review and that might change over time. Um, but certainly as we, as we think about September first, that'll be a, a really high priority for us.
Yeah, I'd like, I, yeah, I have other thoughts about that, but that's a, a longer discussion, yeah. So, but that, that makes sense, and that's a good point. I mean, and, and, you know, makes total sense. That's gonna be a different, different looking process.
Yeah, and some of, yeah, and there's a good chance some of those protocols would be, you know, given to us by the health department or the state, you know, like more mandates on cleaning. So be, be on like our control. Right, exactly. So, and we, we don't know what those are, but we would, we can anticipate that some of that is coming.
Okay. Um, the, um, another question I had is whether, um, COVID is, um, you know, likely to produce even a little bit of savings. So we talked, I think, you know, Clark also mentioned like utilities. Um, I know for individual customers, some of the insurers are giving rebates to people. So I wondered about any insurance savings, like in terms of our, you know, property casualty insurance and, um, and then other things that may, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I was trying to brainstorm like other things that might just not be happening, like, um, you know, insurance claims or workers' compensation, like, um, other savings that might be coming our way that might offset, um, you know, some of the, the negatives.
So I have to tell you, I'm a little bit hesitant to talk about savings because even if we think about closing school, we, um, the buildings are still there. The utilities might be a little bit less. However, we have our custodians in it right now, cleaning, disinfecting, workers' comp will continue because they're working. Um, and then, um, our property insurance has not decreased any of our premiums. There's no returns on that. But there's also an increase in costs. You know, there's some things that we had to purchase and we didn't have some online curriculum, especially for special education students. So I think if you look at the savings versus, you know, what, uh, we're required to pay, um, you know, we're not getting our, uh, rental income. You know, that's a big part of our budget too. So savings versus lost revenues, I don't know if, if.
Yeah.
If I can give you a number on that, but, um.
Right. Okay. No, that helps, cause I mean, I guess, yeah, I wasn't thinking about some of those, um, well, I just didn't know the answer with insurance. And then, um, that's a good point about, of course, workers' comp and utility, the lights still have to be on for the custodians, so, um, okay, that makes sense. Um, let's see, let me go back to slides, um. Sorry, as I'm scrolling here, sorry, um. Okay, Clark heard the unemployment things, um. One thing I know I remember of him that I wanted to just dig into a little bit more is, um, the fund balance. I guess if, you know, because I know I'm, you, you're obviously by far the expert here. Um, talk a little bit about the scenarios that the fund balance is for, um, because I guess part of me is wondering, well, maybe we are in a situation that calls for us to dig into our fund balance, um, to do the important stuff. Um, and so I'm wondering if you could just talk about sort of different approaches, um, philosophies around the fund balance and, um, you know, why you're recommending, uh, what you are in terms of, um, you know, continuing to maybe put a little bit into it rather than, you know, alternatively digging into it.
So, uh, you know, fund balance is different for every school. One size doesn't fit all. You know, some schools that when they have a high fund balance to be able to avoid short-term borrowing, some schools are okay with short-term borrowing, so you kind of have to see what's best for Sherwood. Um, the fund balance is really helpful in a situation like we're in right now, just because we don't know. If we don't get state aid, if we don't get federal money, property taxes, how we're gonna make it, how we're gonna make a payroll? Because our fund balance is not sufficient just to be able to have the extra few months. So, you know, if, in this case, if our fund balance was higher, you know, there was no concern in terms of being able to continue our business and paying bills, but because it's not, you know, we have to think about other revenues and there will be a line of credit. So again, you know, I think you have to see what's best thing for Sherwood and, um, and see what the number is, you know, state, uh, is recommending anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five. Um, but there's a lot of schools that have much lower, some of them have higher. So that's a discussion that the board need to have, just to kind of comfort level in terms of where you want it to be going forward.
Okay, so I hear you saying that's really a policy decision.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then, um, one specific question I had, I was looking at, um, just through the, the line items on, um, uh, let's see, whatever, let's see, like around page twenty-six, twenty-seven, um, there was one line for debt retirement, whi- which reminded me that just globally speaking, uh, um, I wanted to make sure that we're not targeting, like that we're not trying to do debt defeesment, but we're just retiring debt as scheduled. Is that?
So there is no defeesment for next year. It's just payment for the debt that is due that year.
Cool, okay. I just wanted to confirm. Um, I think that's all I had for a moment, cause other, uh, other folks asked my questions, so.
Pablo, I saw you unmuted yourself.
I did, I was just waiting for your lead.
Sorry, I couldn't unmute myself.
Anyway, um, thank you, uh, Marta for the presentation. I, I wanted to follow up on, on, on some of the, the, the idea of presenting the three different models that, um, WASB and the School Administrators Alliance have proposed. Um, the model we're looking at is kind of best-case scenario, so, you know, a- a- as you have more time, you know, it would be interesting to see, you know, what kind of decisions, um, we'll be able to make. Um, especially looking at that worst-case scenario where special ed funding stays at twenty-six percent. Um, there's no, you know, revenue increase or, or, um, and, and there's a, a decrease of fifty dollars per pupil. Um, and what impact that would have on moving forward with, uh, bringing in a librarian, bringing in Spanish down to the lower grades, um, and then really doing right by our paraprofessionals, something that we all talked about, um, wanting to do, and, um, you're, you're helping us get there, which, which is greatly appreciated. Um, so I, I, I personally would, would, you know, like to see those three models. Things are constantly changing. Um, but to the current model, um, and the one point eight one percent increase, uh, first off, I want to thank Hillary for making it clear, um, that there is no plan in place to, to, to get rid of steps and lanes. Um, I, you know, I read the budget over sideways, upside down. I, I, I looked at it a million different ways to see where all the panic was coming from, and I really appreciated the letters that we got from the teachers that were, were rightfully concerned. Should that have been something we were discussing, which we are not, right? We're not discussing, I just want to make it abundantly clear. We heard from the, from Sachin earlier, you know, that we're, we're talking about getting rid of steps and lanes, and that's not in this, in this budget, correct?
Correct.
All right, so, yeah, in this age where there's a lot of misinformation out there, I, it just, this is helpful. And I think a lot of the callers here, you know, are probably relieved to hear that. And, um, and I do agree with, uh, a lot of the letters that we received from teachers that talked about how this really makes us a, a destination district. And, and I, I, I agree with, you know, the rationale to, to, to have steps and lanes. Um, um, as a teacher, I, I, I see, I see their value. Uh, but quick question to the, the, the increase. Last year, when we negotiated, uh, when the SAA and the. Last year, when we negotiated, uh, when the SCA administrators negotiated their contract, the idea was to bring, um, their payback up to the current year CPI. And can you speak to whether or not, and, and just be very, you know, clear as to whether or not we, we've been able to do that? And, and what this one point eight one increase, percent increase looks like in terms of that CPI, assuming we're up to the current year?
So the, uh, one point eight one is based on two thousand nineteen, twenty school year. So it's as current as we can get this year. I think in the prior year, last year, I think it was based on two thousand fifteen, sixteen numbers. So that's not the case anymore. We are, um, taking that, uh, the salary as of right now and projecting forward increasing one point eight one.
Okay. Yeah, so I, um, I really appreciated hearing that and to all the teachers and others that are out there listening. I want to make sure you all heard it as well. And, and, um, because this, this does make sure it's a special, special place. So there's clearly been some misunderstanding, um, out there and I'm glad to hear that that is not the case. Then I wanted to just ask a, uh, one, just a, a point of, um, reference. In the SWASA meeting this morning, we, we heard that we'll be needing to submit a report to the DPI by November with expenditures we've incurred as a result of the shutdown. And I really want to thank, um, you, Marta, for sharing, um, the importance about being wary about any savings we may have incurred because of the other costs we have incurred. But we need to submit this report and, 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 um, I'm hoping that, that, that can start being, um, prepared, um, now. Because we will be going through a transition between, once, uh, you leave us, Marta. And I want to make sure that we have, uh, records of, of all of the additional expenses that the districts had to incur. Because we will submit that to the DPI in November, they submit it. They, they take government's reports and then submit it to the legislature, uh, by January and all that impacts our funding. So, um, and even thinking outside the box, and I don't know how this would work, I did mention it in the meeting this morning. Our teachers have had, and, and, you know, but primarily our teachers, as well as administrators, have had to incur costs, um, as a result of the shutdown. Some people have bought new computers. I'm sitting in front of a new computer now because I didn't have a, a great home office before the shutdown.
We're not paying for that.
We're not paying for that. No, 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 I, I, I'm not asking for that, but I don't know. A way of, of recognizing, you know, people, I've also upped my internet speed, um, because of this. I've, um, and I, and I know our teachers are, are doing that and some are probably buying some software that they hadn't planned on to develop their, their, their online instruction. I'm not necessarily suggesting we reimburse them, although that would be ideal, but, but for somehow for that all to, to, to come into play. Because the GOP-led legislature is currently talking about all of the, 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 um, the savings from the shutdown and always looking for ways to cut funding to schools. So I think anything we can do to, um, present our story and our, our narrative is going to be, um, important. Which brings me, so that's just an ask, like, can we make sure that we're documenting this stuff? Summer school impact. We know that there's a, the summer school enrollment is not only important for student learning. I think sadly, we're going to see a widening of gaps between, we've been working so hard on equity. Those that are already in the margins and struggling sadly are probably going to be pushed further to the margins as a result. So I'm looking at the summer school impact from that perspective, but then also from the financial impact it has on our, our enrollment and how that's tied to our funding. My understanding is that, um, and we've gotten very good at it in the last three weeks. But can we deliver summer school, should we need to, in an online format? Both for the impacting positively student learning, but then also the financial impact it'll have on our funding. So that question's for either Brian or Marta.
I can talk about the financial part and Brian can take that instructional. So, uh, so the way summer school funding works is we can count, uh, the minutes. So, uh, we have to, uh, count the minutes of students that have, um, they receive some sort of academic support. And then, uh, one FTE, one full-time equivalency is forty-eight thousand six hundred minutes. So we have to kind of go through and see how many minutes kids, uh, are at school, how many minutes qualify for that. So in essence, we get six FTEs a year. And, uh, now if you calculate that by amount per student, that's about seventy thousand dollars. Our summer school is not making money. We definitely spend more money on summer school. However, it's a great, uh, way to support our kids. So it's not, should not always be about making money, but supporting the kids.
Okay, okay.
So, from a, from a, oh, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
From an instructional standpoint for summer school, um, it's really still up in the air. What we do know from the, um, the latest, uh, stay-at-home, uh, uh, order that the governor provided is that school district campuses are closed for face-to-face, um, instruction or any activities on school campuses through June thirtieth. So if we were to look at, um, summer school, that would have it all a face-to-face aspect to it, then we would look at that, probably starting that around July sixth, um, in the best case scenario. And at this point, we couldn't, couldn't do it before then. That doesn't mean that we can't, um, you know, provide any virtual opportunities, um, and do our regular timeline. There is some legislation being looked at now to provide an expansion of reimbursement for online classes. They believe right now it's restricted to seven twelve. And so in our current environment, I know there's been some conversations about possibly expanding that. So what we're having some conversations around is, is what is the best structure for us and what can we plan for? Because we really need to start thinking about staffing and class offerings and that stuff really right now in order to plan for that. Knowing how the virus is going to, um, sustain itself in our communities is, is kind of difficult. So it's probably, you know, best for us to be able to really concentrate on, on what a, a virtual setting would look like. And then I know there's conversations today about options of, you know, maybe do some blended learning. You know, maybe students are, are in classes a couple of times a week and then do some online options, um, depending on how things play out. So that's really up in the air. So we'll have more communication coming out on that, um, uh, in the next couple of weeks. But we know that it's not, um, again, anything face-to-face, um, needs to, will not be before, uh, July first.
So can I just, um, piggyback on that? I think one of the things, uh, this was a conversation we'd had with Tim Joints about, um, I feel like either Hillary or Emily had asked about planning for next year, um, and making up. You know, I think what Pablo's talking about, what we know will be a gap in learning and that will be particularly difficult for students who are already struggling. I'm wondering if it, if it's, you know, a conversation to be had now with the SCA, um, and thinking about negotiations about potentially not this summer, because I feel like the summer is still completely unknown, but maybe having to do more next summer, right? Maybe going longer in the school year, maybe having more summer school available. And I think that's something that, you know, I feel like we, I guess from my perspective, like the catching up from this will take more than just once, one, you know, a few weeks. And to give ourselves the opportunity to be flexible in the following school year, when there's more things under our control, I think would be a better scenario. But it would cost us money, definitely, to do that. And I think it's important to be mindful of the fact that we know we're going to find those things, things that we need to address in September, um, and that we're going to, and those things are going to require, you know, teachers and staff to address. So, and I don't know what that would look like in terms of negotiating, since I know, you know, like that's something that's happening now already for next year. But I think we need to, I think as you have those conversations, I think including that in there, I think would be important.
Yeah, and, and, uh, yeah, we'll have to, we'd have to talk about that. And in some, for some staff, we've done extended contracts, um, you know, in certain cases to provide extra services. So it might be, might be something that looks like that. But again, there, um, we, we have to really define what that is to be able to put a cost on it to begin that conversation. That's something I asked, you know, I think you had mentioned, Paru, and, and also I've been talking to, to Tim about is what, like what does that plan from an academic standpoint, what does that look like? You know, for kids that are sophomores that'll be taking the ACT, um, you know, this year, like what is that? Or next year, what does that piece look like for them? What does it look like for kids that might have a couple of years to be able to fill in some gaps? How do we identify that and how do we move forward? So, um, yeah, that, that's a phase that, uh, that Tim's beginning to work through.
I think Clark, Pablo and Hillary want to say something, so.
Can I, do you mind if I go, since I've?
Sure.
I know I kind of infringed on you, Clark, but I just have three.
Oh, don't worry about it.
I kind of wanted to echo and repeat what I had asked a couple of meetings ago about and, uh, kind of a one-pager on COVID expenses that we weren't expecting. Seeing the article this morning or today in the Journal Sentinel about MPS having to pay six million in, you know, unknown fees for Chromebooks and licensing and food and, you know, all of those things. I would like to know better, you know, so not just field trips, but, you know, to Emily's point, what other things have we had to continue to pay or have we not expected to pay because of this scenario we find ourselves in? My second question is about the maintenance and the twenty-five thousand. So we in January had transferred, I think it was a hundred or a little over a hundred and twenty thousand to cover maintenance needs. And we have the, you know, the approval of the second question, the two seventy-five from the referendum, two seven, two hundred and seventy-five thousand from the referendum for maintenance needs. So this twenty-five thousand is, I'm assuming, not able to be covered by the two seventy-five fund and is on top of the hundred and twenty thousand that we approved in January? Is that correct?
This is for next year. The transfer between Fund Ten and Fund Forty-One, the hundred and twenty thousand happened this school year.
This year.
And for Fund Forty-One, you cannot buy any equipment. You have to do repair and anything that's going to extend the life of the building. So obviously buying supplies, tools, things of that nature, it's not eligible to, to be coded to that fund.
So the twenty-five thousand is strictly for, um, equipment?
Yes, for maintenance department.
Okay. And then can I, I was under the impression, I want to get back to the first public comment we had. I was under the impression, it was my, it was my impression, that you had met Brian and Marta with the SCA, two, two times within the last couple of weeks. I thought it was this morning and then around the time of our previous meeting. So I'm looking for an understanding as to why the board's receiving comments that there haven't been people at the table when I thought I was under the impression that you were having meetings with the SCA leadership.
Yeah, we've had meetings the last, um, the last two weeks, I think it's been. Have a meeting scheduled for next week. So we're kind of weekly meetings until we, you know, don't necessarily have things to, I mean, we always have things to talk about. But, um, as we would work through, um, some of our processes and just some of the explanation of where we're at from a budget standpoint. So, yeah, we have them, have them.
Okay, I am, um, and I know you guys are too, very much looking forward to the May report and hoping to have a few more of these things locked down. I know that school budgeting is never an easy situation, um, you know, made worse in this challenging time. So Marta, I do appreciate, um, you know, everything that you are doing. And I, I, I think there are some situations in our budget that we need to do some deep dives in. The athletic department, you know, being one of them. I know Emily has brought up some other sort of funding things that, you know, we've gotten money for in the past in like Project Lead the Way or some other, other things that, I don't want to cherry pick topics, but I do think that there are things in our budget that we need to perhaps do a deep dive in and look at. And, um, you know, the athletic department, I, I have to say, when I first saw that, I was quite frustrated with the idea that we've been underfunding our, our athletic department. And is, i- if it's just a, um, perhaps, you know, we're victims of our own success as our teams have done wonderful in state tournaments and in other, you know, tournaments and those sort of things. Obviously costs go up, so I understand that. But I'm just, uh, overly concerned about how we maintain our budget moving forward, um, under this kind of new, new normal that we may be finding ourselves in. So, um, I'll, those were kind of my three main points. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Pablo, I think was going to say something else. No?
All right.
All right, Clark, go ahead.
All right, round two.
Sorry, Emily, I just saw your.
Oh, Emily, you can go first if you want. I have a few questions.
All right, she's saying, go ahead.
All right. To piggyback off of the comments regarding expenses and savings from the, um, the, the pandemic situation. I wanted to know if we've gotten any, um, if we have any feedback or ideas on what's going to happen with some of the stuff that we do through the rec department and the, um, the fitness center. Because I know that that's a revenue stream for us as well. And my guess is that for the health, um, the fitness center, we're losing some memberships. We're going to have some people expecting to be reimbursed for memberships. We're having, um, you know, there's classes that people pay for. There's, um, personal training that people were doing where they, I guess is that's going to be a pretty big problem as well. And do you have an idea of what that hit might look like or not yet?
So we're in the process of working with the members, either refunding the money or, uh, you know, ex, expending the time that the membership is paid, um, just pretty much, you know, carrying that money to, to the future. Refunding money for classes. The only good thing I will tell you about, uh, Fund Eighty is that you end up with actually substantial fund balance last year. So you have enough money to cover this.
Okay, well, that's good to hear. Then I would speak, and I'll, I'll jump to a different question, then you mentioned Fund Eighty. With the, um, meals that we were providing to the, the children, um, that we still are providing, actually. I know we changed it, or maybe we didn't change it, but I know that, that you do not have to be a student to qualify for the meals that we're getting. Does that have any impact on what fund we should be taking this out of? Is that a community type service that some portion of that could be out of Fund Eighty or no?
No, so actually this is going to be reimbursed from the state and, and federal government. And every child, doesn't matter where they live, and doesn't matter if they're unpaid versus free reduced. We get reimbursement for that. However, I do anticipate that, um, you know, expenses are going to be higher than our revenues. We are currently delivering, uh, not delivering, they're, uh, serving about four hundred meals, breakfast and lunches. And, um, you know, we still have the cost of the food service company, uh, providing their employees, buying food. So I don't anticipate actually making money on it. But again, you know, the situation, it's important to make sure we provide the service to our students and
Absolutely.
Look at the bottom number.
No, and I'm glad you said that because I didn't realize that, that's, that's helpful as well. What about, uh, Brian, you said that in person, um, or Pablo asked about summer school, I made the comment about summer school, but we also have the, the rec activities, right? Which I know we're continuing, continuing to, um, register for, which, we're, you know, we're assuming that's, hopefully at some point we'll be able to do that. What, do we have a number on what do we rely on, um, from that? Because I know some of those, that's a, some of those programs can be a revenue string, not all of them would be, but what's kind of the expected hit from that if we don't follow through?
Yeah, I don't have a number. I'd have to, to dig into that a little bit with Marta and, and Jody. Um, I know certainly, uh, enrollment is, is a way down, obviously. I mean, I think people are being really cautious. I would expect us, you know, in the, again, the best case scenario, to probably begin, um, doing some programming that, uh, July sixth, um, would be the day that we would start. I would expect though, at that time, there still is a likelihood of there being some pretty significant restrictions. Um, so like ten kids in a class, um, and kind of limits. And so we've really got to play out and see what the environment is like at that time, um, which we, again, we might not know, um, you know, before, like three weeks before that happens-ish.
Right.
Depending on that, as the, as the orders are coming out. So we'll have to, we'll have to kind of play that out. Certainly I would, I mean, I would fully expect us not to, you know, be close to the enrollment that we've had um, in the past. Um, but we also, you know, I, I want to be cautious and certainly safety is our, our number one priority. Um, but we also know that, like, if it's, if it's possible for us to have some of this programming, this program is critical to many, many families. Um, so we want to just be smart about our planning and play it out on the safety side, but also, um, like, let's play it out, but let's kind of work towards something.
You know, I, I'm really hopeful that we can, because to, to that point, those programs could be vital in helping us get through some of the other aspects of this pandemic, right? I mean,
Yeah.
if we're able to do that, that could be, um, that would be really, really awesome. Um, just curious, uh, in the budget that we have in front of us now, or the draft that we have now, what do we, what are we assuming right now that will get Marta out of, um, summer activities? Or is there, is it really worth?
So are you talking about summer school or you're talking about the rec department?
Sorry, rec department.
Okay, so that's Fund Eighty. Uh, we have very similar budget what we had last year. So, um, there is, at this point, we don't really know that the true fact because some fees are refunded. Sometimes people wanted to keep that money in our account for future classes. So until we figure out how much money is refunded gone, that at this point, I can't give you the exact number, but we're working through, uh, refunds right now. I can have the update for you in May.
Perfect, but I was just thinking, I was just wanted to clarify that as of right now, if it's pretty much the same as last year, then there's a, there's a decent possibility that we're kind of overstating the inflows from that, right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, uh, Hillary mentioned this, um, as well, talking about including, um, um, paying attention to things that, you know, we had received funding from other sources for. Um, and I think one of those was our, um, was Sam's position, right? I think, but not initially. Are we making sure that we're staying on top of those things that we're still, we still know that we're going to need? Um, but we now are, I guess, one way to put it is on the hook to come up with the funding, whereas before it was a different source. First part of that question, the second part of that question, are any of those that we need to start considering now, um, whether or not we can continue to fund them at all?
So you have for Sam's, uh, position, you have, that's a two-year funding, uh, commitment from seed. Obviously, the percentage is different for year number two, but it's in our budget.
But it helps.
After that, for two thousand, uh, twenty one, twenty two, that's definitely has to be board discussion, so a year from now.
But for right now, were you, you're pretty comfortable that we're okay with that?
Yes.
Good, excellent. Um, last, um, last two questions regarding, um, this draft budget process and everything that I have right now. First one is, you mentioned that the, the finance department has made cuts, particularly in staffing and, um, I know that you've had to go through a lot of turnover. Um, either from day one, when you first, um, joined us, you've had some turnover since then as well. Um, and now with you, um, um, leaving as well, do you, do you feel like we have that, a plan in place that can not only compensate for your change, but the right number of people in that department to get all the work that needs to get done?
So we have been working really hard on improving our process. It really comes down to process, being as efficient as we possibly can. There is, uh, part of the software that was never utilized, they're working on, uh, using that. It's already part of Skyward, you pay for it. And just being more efficient, you know, we're going to be working on, uh, implementing that, uh, it's time, you know, that, the, um, using true time, which is eliminating paper, time sheets, being more efficient, about efficiency. So, uh, I believe that, that you don't need to add any more staffing. Just make sure that you continue with improving the processes and not going back to where you were like a year ago.
Okay. Because I was a little concerned that maybe we were putting ourselves, not knowingly, but maybe putting ourselves in a situation where, um, the next person that comes in is automatically understaffed. And that's, we definitely did not want to be there, but I didn't know where we were going to get the money to do that. So thank you for pointing that out. That's a great point. Um, and then the line of credit that we were talking, that you were recommending that we, um, actually, you're recommending that we would do that sooner rather than later. What are the average rates on those types of lines of credit right now? So that if we were to use them, what are we looking at for interest expense?
So, uh, I couldn't tell you exactly what is it, what it is as of today. I know that I was approached by North Shore Bank back in October to, you know, to kind of think about line of credit at that time, we were doing, doing short-term borrowing. I really wasn't interested and having both. Uh, it's a process, it takes about three weeks for the paperwork. So I think that it's better, uh, to, to work, um, on getting this line of credit now. Obviously, the board has to vote on the line of credit to be able to get that. And then, uh, if we have that in place, obviously the board will be notified if we need to draw on the money. And if we don't draw on the money, there is no expense to this.
Right. No, that's, I understand. Um, okay, I will, that's my last, that's, right now, that's all the questions I have, um, regarding.
I might not call on you again, so.
I have one more question, but it hasn't relate to this.
It's Emily's turn.
Okay, I think I have a couple of questions and, and a quick comment. Um, so, um, Hillary took one of them, so thank you. Um, I'm wondering, and maybe if Brian doesn't know, Paru might, I'm wondering when was the last time steps and lanes were not funded? And I realized in posing that question that I'm not clear on whether it's sort of an on-off switch or it's like we authorize a pool of funding and it's distributed according to a formula, but it could be, you know, uh, ten thousand dollars, or it could be like the one sixty-four that, that Marta put in there. How does that work and, and when was the last time that the district wasn't able to, to fund that?
So since I've been here, um, the process has always been the latter, what you just said. So, um, an additional, uh, dollar amount is budgeted and we approve for that space. Um, so, and it hasn't, we've always been able to, I mean, I, I'd have to go back and look, we probably haven't always fully funded it. Or we were funding it at older numbers versus like, uh, current numbers. Um, so it would have been before I was here. And then probably, and before Brian was here as well. Um, so, but we could probably, uh, get that information.
Um, I was just wondering if there was precedent. Um, and, um, well, I guess let me first make a comment. I think, I, I, I guess, um, you know, I appreciate the clarity that the intent today is not to make a permanent change to, um, the, the teacher's salary schedule, but, um, you know, I, I guess I understand the teacher's concern. If I was in their shoes, I would worry about steps and lanes disappearing one year and then knowing that it's just harder to pull things back into a budget once they're not there. Um, I was thinking about this letter that we got, um, that went through a narrative of what happened in, um, in a teacher's prior district. And she said, um, that there, the district recorded a record number of retirees the year of Act Ten in twenty eleven. Administrators and board members said we'd never again lose so many talented educators in one year. Unfortunately, this was untrue. The precedent set, once steps and lanes disappeared in twenty eleven, continued and still continues today. Um, and I think what she was referring to there was they did make a policy change, but sort of had the intention to, you know, continue to somehow recognize experience. The bigger sort of takeaway from that, though, I take is like that you, you know, even as a board and, uh, administrative team, you can have good intentions, but, um, I guess I understand where the teachers are coming from, because I feel like once we, um, open that up for discussion, um, it just becomes harder to pull it back in. So I guess my point is like, let's not, let's be really clear about, you know, what we're discussing, and I appreciate Hillary trying to clarify. Um, it would make me feel better if, you know, as we go through this preliminary budget, it's at these scenarios. If, um, if, if Brian and Marta, if you're able to, um, actually schedule some sit-down conversations with the S E A about that long-term future, because I heard you say you had had some meetings, but you also had said that you hadn't yet had the, the, you know, long-term conversation about, um, you know, sustainability of, of steps and lanes. So, um, I would feel better if there was really a plan, a specific plan on when those conversations are going to take place and, um, you know, a real strong commitment from everybody involved that, um, that funding for this year, um, is not necessarily a determination for, um, the formula for, for following years. Um, and I, I guess, you know, I, I get that there's maybe misunderstanding about what's going on here. But again, I mean, I kind of understand that misunderstanding and I think it's incumbent on us all, um, to really be clear about what's going on and, um, and make sure that, especially now, um, you know, beyond just appreciating my kids' teachers, I appreciate what all our teachers are doing and, um, you know, I certainly don't want them to think that they're anything but our top priority, um, as, as we're, um, articulating our priorities in terms of, of dollars, uh, for the next year. So that's all I wanted to add. Um, I guess the other, the last question, I guess, to that point is whether, um, it's possible to look at, um, our administrative overhead, like, um, we've had conversations before about being fairly administratively heavy. So in thinking about the last positions that we've added, um, potentially taking those away, or at least projecting a scenario where, um, you know, one or some of those are eliminated. Um, you know, we started out with one dean of students and then we had them in three schools, um. Could we go back temporarily? Um, could we do without an authentic learning coordinator, um, even for a year? Um, I think it's only fair if we're talking about, you know, asking experienced teachers to take a pay cut, if, you know, we think about the, um, the district office as well. Um, I, I, you know, to be clear, I, I see the enormous value in all those positions, but I also think that, you know, they're potential, you know, in the worst case scenario, they may be a luxury we can't afford. That's it.
Yeah. I just want to be clear, like, for pay cut, just, just so, again, like, is that just your, the reference to not providing steps and lanes?
No, I mean, like, worst, worst-case scenario where it's like a cut in for people spending and it's like, you know, wow, things are super crazy bad and everyone's.
As we're doing the scenarios. Got it, okay, great, thank you.
I just want to add something. So because of the state statutes, you cannot just issue, uh, teachers' pay cuts. The contract that's going to be, uh, going out shortly, it states that, uh, they're getting notice that they're having contract next year and it's going to be the same or more than it was in a prior year.
Thank you for clarifying that. So we would have to, if that, if something, you, you know, if it's like worst, worst, worst-case scenario, we would have to cut some other kind of overhead, like other staff that's not contract staff, is that right?
Well, there's other areas you can look at. Uh, you know, you can obviously at will employees, which is also core staff, um, or looking at even making changes to the benefits to save some money.
Okay. Thanks for pointing that out. I wasn't thinking about that the right way.
Uh, Pablo, did you want to say something?
Yeah, just in follow-up to Emily's comments, um, just because there's a perception that we're talking about steps and lanes, just to make clear, we didn't start talking about steps and lanes. It, we, we got, you know, half a dozen to a dozen letters from folks and we made it very clear that that's not what we're talking about. Just, just to clarify, just because there's a perception doesn't mean it's truth. Um, and also the deans of students and my assumption, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, um, but the Athletic Learning Coordinator, those are not administrative positions either. Are they?
Right, yeah.
And then.
Those are not administrative positions. The administrative positions would have been Ted Knight, um, who is not with us and then would have been Sam coming in. So it would have been a.
Yeah, no.
A med career.
Yeah, and then I guess there's a question, um, because I, um, agreed. Emily proposed, uh, at our last meeting that we, or at one point that we, you know, consider hiring, um, human resources person. So I'm, I'm just wondering where, because you're, right now, you just, Emily said we should reduce. You've mentioned a lot of positions that are not administrative, but you've also proposed adding. So could you just clarify for me where your thinking is?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think that was an early question about where we're going to fund in terms of like what we cut in the business office, you know, is that the best place to cut? Um, so making choices, but I mean, to be clear, I can't propose positions. I can ask if that's been considered, but, um, you know, that's the question I had.
Those are things we can explore in the, in the.
Right, yeah, no, I was just curious, because the premise was that we're, we're administratively top-heavy or that we're top-heavy, but then, you know, I just want to just process and try to understand, um, how you, you're balancing that out by suggesting we add a position, which I'm not at all against. I think there, there's a need, you know, for, for someone with a human, uh, for the position you proposed in the past. Um, I'm just trying to comprehend.
Yeah, I mean, I think, and I was using administrator as, you, you know, they're not, they're, um, they're not classroom teachers.
Gotcha, all right.
Um, I'm not calling on Clark anymore. Anybody else want to say anything? Um, you know, I guess I wanted to say, um, a couple of things. One, I appreciate, um, this conversation, I guess, you know, I feel like we're in this, we're, you know, like when we originally planned to have our budget conversation, it was going to be really different. Um, and, um, I agree with, um, Suchan's point that budgets are about values and what we value in a district. And I think I, you know, I want to see, I, I like that the way we think about our budget is how will it impact students? Right? Like, what are we doing to improve students' educational experiences? And, um, I think there's going to be really difficult decisions that have to be made. Um, quite honestly, like, I don't see us being able to, there is definitely not going to be a situation where we're not going to have to give up something that we don't want to give up. Um, but I do also want to say to Brian that I think it's really important that the, that you're having these conversations with the S E A and that they feel like they're being brought along in those conversations and it's not, um, that they're, I mean, I'm, I know you met with them, but I think it sounds to me as if like they wanted to just be able to discuss like what this is going to look like a little bit more. Um, and I, and, you know, at the same time, as a board, we have to be fiscally responsible. Like, I appreciate that Marta's like, look, you can't budget things that you can't afford. And so we need to also think about like, what's sustainable, um, this year, next year? I mean, I think we should assume that we're in the situation for the next eighteen to twenty-four months, right? So, um, you know, I think finding a way to balance all those things, but including the people who are going to be affected by those decisions and those conversations, I think is really important. Um, and I guess for the teachers who are listening, like, you know, I think as a board, we want to say, and I hope you heard, that we value you. We value your career advas- and, and advancement. We want to be a district that people want to come to and stay at. And so those are things that we think are important and impact students. Um, and so I think we are going to all have to make some hard decisions together. And, um, to find a way to do that over the next few months, I think is going to be important. And I look forward as well to hearing, you know, I hope in a month we have more answers because it's really difficult to make those decisions in a space where it feels like there's so many unknowns. Um, and so, um, and so I hope we'll have more of that in the next month. All right, Clark. All right, Clark, did you have one last thing? I see you're unmuted, unmuted. So.
No, I only did that to fake you out.
Okay. Um, all right. I'm gonna, if I don't have anything else from board members, I'm gonna ask Mickey to see if there's public comments.
All right. If there's anybody that has a question or comment, just hit star six on your phone and I'll call you out by the last two digits of your phone number. Star six. And we have, uh, number forty-five, forty-five.
Hi, this is Priya Batia. Um, I am a parent in the district. I just wanted to first comment on the amount of, um, thought, full discussion that's been happening around the different scenarios. Appreciate the emphasis on student experience and learning throughout all these different scenario planning. I did want to ask about the advanced learning department. I've been at a couple of linkages meetings where parents have, um, expressed concern about the resources and staffing in that department and that they don't feel sufficient to meet student needs. At the last linkages meeting where it seemed to leave off was that it would be addressed in the next budget meeting. And so I just wanted to see, I'm unable to tell looking at the budget document sort of where that's at. Is the funding steady or has that changed?
I'm gonna, I think, and Marta, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we've kept everything the same in the advanced learning department for the next year. Sorry. Hold on. No, no, Marta was muted.
Is Marta trying to unmute? Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
We had a vacancy in January, so we decided not to, uh, do a posting. We did internal, uh, um, posting and we had people that were helping us cover that, uh, position. However, we have a posting out for next year. So we're going to continue as we have always done. This position was going to continue, um, starting September.
So we have a, so just to reiterate, we are looking for an, uh, somebody as an advanced learning coordinator.
From outside of the district.
Okay.
So just to clarify, there is somebody right now who is at point six of FTE. So would this new person be in addition to the existing person?
I know that we had, uh, we were able to get some people help us, uh, cover this, the, the needs of the district. So unless, I don't know the name of the person that you're referring to, but maybe Brian, you can help.
Yeah, I do. Um, yeah. So it is in addition to, so, um, Jennifer Cosgrove is in, is in the, uh, the point six position, I believe. And then Sam Nadelski's position is the position that we'll have. So it'll be in addition to.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Um, I appreciate the information.
Thanks for, thanks Priya.
All right. We also have, uh, number sixty-one. Your last two digits are six one.
Hi, this is Janet Clayline, uh, twenty sixteen East Menlo Boulevard. So, um, just, um, to reiterate the comments, this has been, I think, an awesome discussion. I have a couple of points that I would like, um, to be considered. First of all is, one of the things that we haven't discussed was sort of the children's hospital support piece. And given the circumstances of what's going on and the focus that we've taken with regards to wellness. I, I just unfortunately don't recall the circumstances under which that, um, piece is being funded and how any funding could impact that program next year. My recollection roughly is that it was secure for next year, but it would have to be funded the year after. But, um, if anyone could provide some further information on that piece, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, I, I think you're correct. And I guess I'd have to ask Brian or Marta to confirm, but that we had funding through the twenty, or it was funded through the twenty twenty-two school year. Um, what I don't know is if we're in a position now to extend that, given that school is closed or, so I don't know if either of you have had any conversations with them about that. Brian?
Uh, yeah. So I have, I have not. So that's, I'm correct as far as the continued support in future years. So I know, um, the counselor, what we have been able to do is support students who were getting support at school, um, during this closure, um, being able to still connect with, um, counselors that they were seeing. So we've been able to try to maintain that relationship the best we could. Um, but, uh, at this point, um, yeah, we haven't had any discussions about, furthering, you know, certainly furthering that to relationship or anything that would indicate that we would not be doing that relationship moving forward. So I think that's a really important partnership for us. So, Marta, did you have any other thing to add to that?
No, I think you covered pretty well. Um, you know, we have not heard nothing but positive or, um, with this partnership, definitely would like to continue in future.
Thank you. And, um, secondly, um, Marta, this is just a question for you, but my experience with line of credit has been that, um, you had mentioned earlier that if you're not drawn on it, that there's no cost. Um, my experience has been that there is a cost for having a certain line of credit, um, typically, but my experience has been in a corporate setting. So I just wanted to clarify whether, um, whether there's sort of different fact pattern with respect to the school district that truly there is no cost to, to engaging in the line of credit. And, um, just to reiterate that, um, I think that's, um, that recommendation is an excellent recommendation because my concern from my experience as a tax and treasury manager historically is that the short-term borrowing markets could be a little iffy or, um, bumpy as we transition through the economics of this pandemic. So, um, I don't know if you could respond to that line of credit question.
So my, uh, my discussion in October with North Shore Bank was that the only expense to the school district was going to be the, uh, legal opinion for the board to approve the resolution. And until we draw on the line of credit, there will be no expenses to the school district. So that was the discussion I had with North Shore Bank in October.
Excellent. Um, that's great to hear. Um, and my last question is, um, maybe harder to answer because it's in the weeds of, um, the systems that we use to track the details. But I'm curious as to, um, as we try to balance budget and meet all of our priorities as a district. If we have sufficient detail within the school systems that we maintain, to be able to determine sort of, um, and I know this is so hard to do, but to be able to determine which programming is effective and which programming perhaps is ineffective? And can we quantify that in any way, shape or form such that we can look at trying to maximize the effectiveness of our programming that gives us the best educational outcome, um, as we look at the budget pieces of that?
Uh, I'm just going to say that's a hard question to, uh, to, um, think about. I guess, um,
I'm not necessarily looking for an answer, but I think it, I, I would encourage the board and Marta and, um, you know, it's, it's a difficult thing to do. I fully understand that. It requires some, some systemic processes to be put into place. But, um, if we have that systemic data, it might be worth applying some number crunching to try and understand what part of our educational programming seems to give us the best outcomes and, um, drive to those outcomes.
Yeah. Thank you.
That's all I had.
Thanks, Janet.
We have one other person right now. I think it's Sachin, um, number seventy.
It is Mickey. Thank you. Um, yeah, I just wanted to, uh, one, really thank the board just for the, the thoughtful questions that I heard. There are a lot of really, um, important things that I think need to be asked and dug into. And I, I really value you guys taking the time to do that. Um, I wanted to just be able to jump in just with a couple of specific things related to some of the comments that were made, if that's okay. You know, one to the, kind of the question that was asked about when has steps and lanes ever not been funded? Um, in my experience, I've been a chief negotiator for the SBA for going on 11 years now, um, and, and never in the, the, the time that I've been doing this, has it ever not been funded. And in fact, every board has always, every board and administration that we work with has always funded, uh, teacher pay to the maximum that they were able to. So that meant full steps and lanes and doing the full CPI, um, related to, uh, the cost of living adjustment annual increase. So this would be the first time that, that steps and lanes would not be funded. And, and I fully recognize, and you know, I know we need to keep, keep in mind that we may be going into something completely unprecedented when we look at the budget moving forward. But again, we're, we're looking just now at the best case. Um, and certainly in, in those years, even when we were facing declining enrollment, this is something that was always prioritized. We formally have the option to negotiate over the, uh, the CPI increase. And to this point, we haven't formally begun negotiations. So to the question about, um, us meeting with the administration, that's absolutely correct. We have met with them, uh, the last three weeks. Um, and those haven't been discussions. I mean, in my comments, I specifically said that we've, we've met, that's true, but we've not been invited to share any ideas or look for any solutions to work around this. So again, like the, the concern we have is that steps and lanes has been a real big priority. Um, but it's been taken off the table and we haven't had the opportunity to generate possible solutions. Um, and, and unfortunately, you know, when, when we've been asked, we, we haven't been given those opportunities. So I think the, the concern is that, right, those meetings really feel a little bit more like we're just being told what the state is. We're not having an opportunity to sit at the table and help develop solutions. I would love to be at that table to, to work with you all to do it. And I know we've said in the past that I think it'd be really valuable for all of us to sit down together. And I recognize that maybe the whole board can't do that, but I would for sure invite one of the members of the board to sit in at our next meeting so that we can start to really talk about the solutions. Cause I think that would be very helpful. Um, but finally, I mean, I, I really, you know, I greatly appreciate that, that, that you guys want to support us. And, and you've, you've said that and we've seen it, you know, uh, over the years. I think the concern that we have in this moment is that we've seen this play out before. We've seen situations where something gets, and, and we don't want to use the word maybe eliminated, right? But in the moment it's being defunded. And I think we can safely say that in our best case scenario budget, steps and lanes have been defunded. And the question that we have and what we really don't know, we've, like I said, I've asked it at the last two meetings. What will it take to bring it back? When would it return? And what kind of scenario would we be able to go back to it? And I haven't gotten an answer. Um, so what would really help teachers to feel better is, you know, here we're sitting, looking at it being defunded, but we need to see you defend it. We need to see you defend it as a model and commit to including it going forward. And that's what's really going to make teachers better. Please recognize that, you know, trust is at a premium here. And asking, you know, asking to trust it, we need, we'd like to see some more than that. So I greatly appreciate the questions and I think that this is the beginning of a really good, important discussion. But it's, it's got to be the beginning of a discussion. That's what we're hoping to be a part of as we go forward. So thanks a lot for taking the time tonight. Thanks for listening. And if there are further questions, just about some of those historical things, know that we, we are here to do that.
Great. Thanks.
All right. I'm looking at anybody else that has a comment, uh, star six. Uh, number sixty-nine has just, has a comment.
Hi there. Um, I'm Brian Harwig. I currently teach at the high school as a special education teacher. Um, and I just, you know, I wrote a letter, um, discussing the, the, you know, steps in lane. Um, I think it's important to understand the impact that it has on teachers. You know, especially me personally, situationally, um, you know, knowing that it's been, that was the number one reason I came to Shorewood. You know, I wanted more of an urban setting as well, but in being in other districts, um, going into my twelfth year of teaching next year, it's, it's evident that, um, when districts pay their staff accordingly to their education, years of experience, they are highly valued. And so that's one of the main reasons I came to Shorewood was because I felt that my work as a special education teacher was undervalued in the districts that I had been in previously, um, and seeing that Shorewood High School and Shorewood School District really valued teachers and their educational experience and their years of experience, that, that really drew me in. Um, and so what that also did was push me to better myself, um, by going back to school and obtaining a master's. So with that in place, I knew there'd be a pay increase, but more importantly, I knew there was going to be a value, um, from, you know, put on myself. And my experience in the classroom of being able to bring those new attributes and educational experiences into the classroom to help make my students become better citizens, um, and better students. So when talking with my wife, and again, this is where the personal tie comes in. It was important that I get my masters, A, to help the students, but B, because there would be, um, an increase in pay, which we were expecting our third child in July. And that increase in pay was discussed to a high extent of looking in terms of the future and determining how long she'd be able to take from maternity leave. We decided that she would take the full twelve to be with our newborn and our two other daughters. And hearing that the defunding, the funding of, of this steps in lane system, um, for me personally has had a huge impact because I would be going to a master's lane, um, with gaining a year of experience. And that, that is right now weighing on my mind heavy. Um, and you know, that's, it's, it's hard for me to, it's a hard pill for me to swallow because, you know, it's, it's affecting my family as well. Um, and my wife and I are looking at maybe not doing as much maternity leave or whatever the case is, but, you know, we started to do things that show, um, you know, that increase in salary and the value that is placed on me as an educator. So, um, her and I are both teachers. And that, you know, that decision to A, go to Shorewood and then B, obtain my masters was a big decision. But we knew it'd be beneficial for our family. And so that's why we did it. And that's why I obtained my masters. And I just finished in December. So that, you know, not having the steps in lanes even for this year, um, impacts me financially, um, and impacts my family. So I just wanted to tie in that kind of a, a personal story, but also the reason why steps and lanes are to me of high importance. Um, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you for sharing your story with us in your email.
Thank you guys for all the work you guys are putting into.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else, uh, star six, if you have a comment to make? Otherwise I am not seeing anybody.
Okay. Um, I guess what I would say is, um, you know, as you, for everybody who's listening, we didn't vote on this tonight. This is an ongoing, um, conversation. It will come to the annual meeting in August and the final budget will be determined in October. Um, and we are always available, any of the board members, if you want to send us comments or, um, uh, questions via email, please do so. Um, we will also have another board meeting next Tuesday, seven o'clock that time. So, um, we'll be back here. Um, and you can come in and talk to us there as well. So thank you all for coming and listening. Thanks to, um, my fellow board members and Brian and Marta and Mickey. And Brian and Marta and Mickey and, um, fifteen minutes early, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Are we, yeah, no debrief, right?
Uh, not for this one, no.
All right.